Okay, folks, it's now 7:10. And time to get underway. So, good evening and welcome to Town Meeting, the iconic New England forum where we, the people, engage, discuss, and decide what matters most in our beloved town. Before we convene for tonight's special town meeting, which precedes the annual, please stand if you are able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Before we start the meetings, how about some inspiration? Last fall, Superintendent of Schools Patty DeBoer and I were chatting about tonight and what it represents. We decided that the tone of the meeting might benefit from hearing from a student, especially if invited to tackle what's become a mainstream topic in America today, and Cape Cod is no exception to that, nor is Mashpee. The topic is civility. Some say we've lost it, others say otherwise, and some aren't sure just what it means. So, how about an essay contest on the topic of civility? I'm happy to introduce the Superintendent of Schools and her eighth-grade student.
Thank you, everyone, and I know that we're under a time constraint. I do want to give a shout-out to the three-member committee that assessed multiple essays: Kathy Mahoney, the librarian for the Mashpee Public Library; Steve Withrow, the editor of the Mashpee Enterprise; and also Leslie Hatton, who is an editor for Cape Cod Life. So, it's my pleasure to introduce Fernanda Lima. She's the eighth grader whose essay was chosen as the top essay. The prompt that they responded to, "What is civility and how does it, or the lack thereof, impact our school, Mashpee Middle High School, and our community? What are ways I can model civility?" So, I'm going to turn it over to Fernanda.
Civility changes over time. Civility is not a tactic or a sentiment. It is the determined choice of choosing trust over cynicism of community over chaos. George W. Bush. The first time I heard this quote, I was in history class. My head rested upon the desk, counting the seconds until school was out. The third-grade classroom was boisterous and disorderly, students yelling insults across the room, and papers scattered around the floor. We were playing a game where you had to answer questions about the pilgrims and their voyage to Massachusetts, and they were arguing about who should get the points of the girl who got dismissed. Whenever the class was disruptive, the teacher would recite a quote to get her attention. Usually, I wouldn't think about the quote, but this time was different. It sparked an unexpected interest in me. Once we finished the game, we were sent to read a book. I had reread the same page a million times. My mind kept wandering back to that quote. What did she mean by it? After trying to read the same sentence four times, I stood up and strided towards my teacher. I questioned her on what the word "civility" meant, because that's what I figured the quote was referring to. She simply gave me the definition and directed me back to my seat. I was entranced by it. I sat, looking into space, trying to decode what it meant. I eventually got home and decided to look it up. An hour was spent researching the definitions of each word that came together to form the puzzling sentence. After writing down each definition and rereading the quote over and over again, I finally formed somewhat of a grasp on what it meant. Of course, I don't remember it verbatim, but it went along the lines of, "Civility isn't a strategy for your own personal gain, but rather the serious choice of choosing trust and loyalty for your people over disorder." We were putting our own selfish agenda of winning the game over the feelings and safe environment of the classroom. After that encounter, I had stopped thinking about civility. However, this prompt has opened the doors of curiosity once again. It has me questioning where I saw civility, if I was civil, and even if there was any civility in our community at all. In the end, I have decided that I don't know. I don't know the answer to any of these questions. The desire to understand and know the answer has been reignited. If you were to ask me when I was younger what I thought civility would be like in the future, I would have told you I expected everybody to be respectful and at least tolerant towards each other. At that time, I was just figuring out the world and perceiving how everyone acted towards each other. I would make mental notes and observe how people treated one another, seeing people be kind, like holding the door open for someone, and then looking at the warm smile that was giving back as a silent thank you, or watching as someone was made fun of for something they couldn't control, like their acts or disability, witnessing how the victim's eyes would gloss over with hot tears. I'd watch as I saw their self-confidence slowly diminish, piece by piece, with every ignorant remark. I'd take those notes into consideration before I had any interactions, thinking about what type of reaction I wanted to induce from the other person. That was my mentality for many years before I realized what I was failing to take into account. After reflecting upon the method that I used to practice civility, I recognized that it boils down to more than what I had originally thought. It's not just about observing and learning from the mistakes of others, but rather incorporating advocacy as a part of civility. I can't call myself civil and just watch as the others around me get mistreated while I do nothing because I, myself, aren't the one acting. If I just sit around and stare mindlessly at the cruelty that is occurring, I'm just as guilty, if not more, than the violator who committed the misdemeanor. This realization has really opened my eyes. At first, I wasn't willing to admit I wasn't doing my due diligence to my community, but I put my egotistical agenda aside and put myself in their position. How would I feel if I were being teased and the people around me were doing nothing? I'd never see those people the same. Although it's true that they might have been nice to me at some point, but when it merely mattered and I was in desperate need of some assistance, they all turned a blind eye. Opening your mind to the possibility that you aren't doing enough isn't always easy. Ultimately, it is a necessity in order to be a proactive member of your community. In Mashpee Middle High School, students have been inconsiderate towards staff and each other. As life goes on, we tend to stray away from our fundamental morals. At times, we'll think, as we get older, certain rules don't apply to us because of our independence that grows with age. However, once in a while, we have to ground ourselves again. No matter how far gone you believe you are, it's never too late to change. Own learning, deep-seated mindsets, is difficult, but very compulsory. We are all still learning, and that's very valid. In the beginning of this essay, I didn't know what I envisioned civility to look like now, but I have come to be very fond of the idea that civility is having the ability to grow and learn from the mistakes you have made in the past to aid in your journey of being a proactive and courteous citizen in your community. We have all our lives to grow and refine the way we treat others. I'm aware I still have a long way to go to even crack the surface of being an ethical citizen, but I'm ready to spend my life not thinking about myself, but others as well. Even if you think you are a perfect, upstanding citizen, I challenge you to take a good look at yourself and see what you could improve regarding your actions towards your community. It might seem like a tedious task, but it will impact the lives of many people.
I was about to do that so I could see this side of the room. Thank you very much, Fernanda and Superintendent DeBoer. I'm pleased to say also that Fernanda's essay will appear, I believe, in this coming Friday's edition of the Mashpee Enterprise, thanks to publisher John Huff and managing editor Steve Withrow. The two other finalist essays will also appear, Steve has told me, on the online version of the Mashpee Enterprise. So, if you were here for the October Fall Meeting, you'll recall that we sailed through the entire warrant in 27 minutes, which means we'd be half over by now. I imagine tonight and tonight will be here for a tad longer, but you never know. And I remember, to that point, my high school debate teacher had some advice, and the advice was, "Get to the point, stick to the point, and do it in three minutes or less, and your position will most likely prevail over those that go much longer than that." So, I would ask everybody here to keep comments pertinent to the scope of the article, to be concise and non-redundant, and of course, demonstrate civility with respect and courtesy. Are we ready? Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I am directed to notify and summon the inhabitants of the town of Mashpee, who are qualified to vote in the elections to meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday, the 1st of May, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. for the following purposes: to act on the articles contained in the warrant. Good time for Mr. Whedon to intervene.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to dispense with the reading of the special town meeting warrant articles.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Article number one of the special town meeting warrant, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $5,259 from the revenue available to appropriation to the snow and ice amount.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article One by a vote of five to zero.
No discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Unanimous. Article number two, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Two as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrases, or take any action related thereto.
Second.
Select Board Recommendation is approved by a vote of five to zero. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Two by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Article Two say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article number three, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Three as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Three by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Article Three say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Thank you. Article number four, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Four as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Four by a vote of five to one.
Community Preservation Committee recommends the approval by a vote of eight to zero, just so you know. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. The town clerk, W.K., tells us there are 428 registered voters in attendance tonight. Thank you all. Article number five, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Five as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Five by a vote of six to one.
Any discussion on Article Five? Yes, sir. Brian Everett, Forest Drive, Mashpee. I just want to remind voters that Article 27, we're going to be voting about horsepower restriction. I think it pertains to this article, horsepower causing erosion at the landing. Thank you. The speaker makes reference to an article that does not appear in this special town meeting warrant, but is welcome to make comments when we get to the annual meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article Five, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes by majority. Article number six, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Six as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto. Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Six by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Six? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article seven, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Seven as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action related thereto.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Seven by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Seven? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. I would accept a motion to adjourn the special town meeting, which has reached its conclusion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nobody would be opposed, would they? Didn't think so. Just briefly, before we move on to the annual meeting, you may or may not be aware that Mashpee provides for a deputy or assistant moderator in case I fall off the stage or am otherwise unable to serve. The moderator makes that appointment. The deputy moderator can also assist when seating or space logistics are challenging, as happened not too long ago. I'm happy to announce that longtime Mashpee resident and attorney Edward Gildea has accepted that assignment. Ed, just stand and wait so we can recognize you. I'd also like to acknowledge Ed Larkin, who's not able to join us tonight, who has served the town well in this role as the deputy to my predecessor. Ed has been and continues to be a respected and active participant in town affairs and government, and I know we all extend our thanks to Ed for his service. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, I am directed to notify and summon the inhabitants of the town of Mashpee, who are qualified to vote in the elections. Feel free to interrupt me at any time. To meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday, the 1st day of May, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. for the following purposes: to act on the articles contained in the following warrant. Cue Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to dispense with the reading of the annual town meeting warrant articles.
Second.
All those in favor, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Passes unanimously. Thank you for that. All right. Article number one, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article One as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article One by a vote of seven to zero.
Discussion on Article One? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article One, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article number two, Mr. Whedon.
I move the town vote, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to fix the salaries of the elected officers as specified under the columns entitled Town Manager Recommendation in line Items Two and Twenty-Two of the omnibus budget, as distributed to the voters at the town meeting, and further the town defray the expenses for the ensuing fiscal year by appropriation. Those amounts shown under columns entitled Town Manager Recommendation, and that to fund, that to fund said appropriation, the town raised and appropriate $63,889,255,000, $63,889,255, and further appropriate and transfer from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account, $450,000, to line item forty million, I mean forty, $50,000 to line item forty-one, $120,000 to line item seventy, and $6,000 to line item seventy-two, and appropriate and transfer $13,125 from the wastewater infrastructure investment fund to line item seventy-five, and appropriate and transfer from the shellfish receipts reserved for appropriation account, $30,000, to line item thirty-two, appropriate and transfer from the waterways improvement fund, $32,000, to line item thirty-one, appropriate and transfer from the cemetery receipts reserved for appropriation account, $14,000, to line item fifty-three, appropriate and transfer from the street betterment receipts reserved for appropriation account, $360,000, to line item seventy, $63,475, to line item seventy-two, and $70,400 to line item seventy-four, appropriate and transfer from the septic betterment receipts reserved for appropriation account, $18,385, to line item seventy, $15,350 to line item fifty-five, and appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Act Fund, $240,000, to line item seventy, and $11,600 to line item seventy-two, and appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, $1,500, to line item seventy-eight.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Two by a vote of seven to zero.
Just so that you are aware, all of those numbers that Selectman Whedon read off represent the funding sources for the total that's in this warrant. You probably don't have access to the motion itself, but that's what they represent. What was not included in the fund transfers that he mentioned is what gets raised through taxes. In the past, you're familiar with the tradition of the moderator reading each of the, in this case, eighty-one line items of the budget. I choose not to do that. So, in lieu of that, I'm going to ask if anybody has a line item that they would like to discuss, to say so by shouting out the word "hold." And to narrow this down a little bit, I'm going to refer to page numbers and line items. I'm assuming that most of you have the Blue Books, but I will reference both page numbers in the Blue Book and the line item in case the version of the warrant that you have does not follow the pagination in the same way. So, for line items one through seventeen that show on page fourteen of the Blue Book, does anyone wish to put a line on "hold"? For line items nineteen through thirty-six that appear on page fifteen of the Blue Book, does anybody wish to put a line item on "hold"? Did I hear something? Which line item? What is it? Could somebody help? Shout out?
Twenty-five and twenty-six.
Twenty-five and twenty-six. We'll come back to that. Any other holds on that page? Line items thirty-seven through fifty-two on page eighteen, any line item to be placed on "hold"? Line items fifty-three through sixty-eight on page seventeen, any of those to be placed on "hold"? Line items sixty-nine through eighty-one on page eighteen, any of those to be placed on "hold"? So, to recap, the only "hold" that we have on the entire omnibus budget are line items twenty-five and twenty-six, and as a person who wants to speak to that, that come to the microphone and state your question or comment, that would be just swell.
I actually had a second hold that I didn't get out.
Could you just hit your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. Susan Vanthol, Balmouth Road. Okay. On page three, you have the key drivers for why the budget would
A little closer to the mic.
Why the budget would increase, and my concern would be that two of them were significant in double digits. One was Sauer, thanks, Deb. Sauer Commission, thirty-seven percent increase, and elections and registrations, a forty percent increase. And so, I was trying to put a "hold," I only got a "hold" on one of them, but I'd like an explanation for both of those categories, Sauer Commission and elections and registrations, why they would have such a significant increase. Thank you.
Can somebody address that question?
I'm going to take a stab at it. I believe what may be referenced is the fact that we currently have a consultant in Sauer. We also prepared for his replacement at some point, and we don't know when that point would be. We would not be paying for both at the same time, but we would be paying for one or the other. That could be what is being referenced. I'm not exactly sure, but I do know that that was a budget item. I don't know if that's the question. And at this point, Mr. Jack has been remaining on, so I'm just letting a good thing continue.
Was that explanation helpful? Was that explanation helpful? Then I don't know what it is.
Mr. Moderator? Deb Kay, town clerk. The election expense account is up because out of fifty-two weeks next year, and yes, we are talking two different fiscal years, we will have elections through forty-four of them. So, we are going to have some expenses increased to accommodate the number of elections that we'll have next year. In March, we have early voting, Election Day, and we also have the local, plus town meeting. I have to pay my wardens to attend to the elections, and I have election staff also. So, I'm not sure that there's a forty percent increase, but we do have a heavy election calendar next year to address.
Thank you. Does that help? All right. If everybody is satisfied with the two "holds" that we just dealt with, and hearing nothing to the contrary, I will assume that you are, so let's move to the vote. All those in favor of Article Two as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes by majority vote. Article number three, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $6,578,527, as follows: $2,016,527 from the capital stabilization fund, $425,000 from the ambulance receipts reserved from appropriation account, $42,000 recreational revolving account, $100,000 from the Mashpee Cable and Advanced Technology account, $1,495,000 from the school grants, and $2,500,000 from the school choice fund to various departments' capital accounts, as specified in the chart accompanying this article.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Three by a vote of seven to zero.
Is there any discussion on Article Three? Yes, sir.
Yes. Alexander Watt, Pimlico Pond Road. This question goes partially to the future Article XI, where we're going to be asked to approve an override. And I'm wondering, the $5 million line item for HEVAC upgrades in this article is the same item as we are going to vote on in Article XI. The other question I have is on the resurface pickleball courts. Did we already just vote in a special to improve those through Article Four in the special? And I direct that to whomever.
Gentlemen has two questions for somebody.
Yes, I would defer to the Finance Committee on the HVAC question and on the Article Four. The pickleball, yes. If, Catherine, if you could speak to that one for clarity.
Ms. Laurent, I love saying her name. It's French. I'm not a voter. Is it okay for me to speak?
Does anybody have any objection to the head of the Department of Public, Public Works speaking? She is not a voter, which is required unless you disapprove. Any objection?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please proceed.
Thank you. Catherine Laurent, DPW Director. So, speaking to the first question having to do with the HVAC upgrades at, at the school, this is additional funding. So, the two articles together would fund the required improvements for the HVAC systems at the three schools. So, this five million and then approximately a two and a half million out of the, the Article XI, I believe. And then, Article Four in the special town meeting was for the existing tennis courts at the Quashnet School. One of those tennis courts will be converted to two pickleball courts. There are separate pickleball courts on Asshument Road. Those are eight courts that were constructed a number of years ago. This is to resurface those eight courts on Asshument Road. So, two different locations.
Thank you. Does that address your questions? Any further discussion on this article? This article requires a two-thirds vote. We'll try for unanimous. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you. Article number four, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Excuse me. Motion to be made by- I move that the town vote to approve Article Four as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrases, or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Four by a vote of seven-zero.
Any discussion on Article Four? Seeing or hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article number five, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Five as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Five by a vote of seven-zero.
Any discussion on Article Five? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article number six, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article Six as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Six by a vote of seven-zero.
Any discussion on Article Six? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Unanimous. Article Seven, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article Seven as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Seven by a vote of seven-zero.
Discussion on Article Seven? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article number eight, Mr. O'Hara. Oh, oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Eight as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
And Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eight by a vote of seven-zero.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Eight? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Article number nine, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate, approve Article Nine as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase, or take any action related thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Nine by a vote of seven-zero.
Any discussion on Article Number Nine? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article number ten, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate twelve million dollars to fund construction completion of Phase One of the town's comprehensive nitrogen and wastewater management, treatment, and disposal improvement plans, including sanitary sewer, mains lift stations related to wastewater collection, and treatment systems improvements, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in Section One of Chapter Twenty-Nine C of the General Law, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow twelve million dollars and issue bonds or notes therefore under Chapter Forty-Four of the General Laws and/or Chapter Twenty-Nine C of the General Laws, that the treasurer will, the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to Chapter Twenty-Nine C, and in connection therewith to enter into a financing agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project for the financing thereof, and that the Select Board and/or town manager is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project, and further to authorize the Select Board and/or town manager to apply for any and accept any federal, state, county, and other funds that may be available for this purpose, and to enter into any intermissible or any other agreements necessary for the acceptance of such grants or funds which shall be used to offset the total appropriation authorized herein, provided, however, that this appropriation and debt authorization shall be contingent upon passage of Proposition Two and a Half Debt Exclusion Ballot Question pursuant to General Law, Chapter Fifty-Nine, Subsection Twenty-One CK.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Number Ten by a vote of seven-zero.
Thank you. Any discussion on Article Ten? This requires a two-thirds vote. We'll try for unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Thank you. Article number eleven, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to authorize the treasurer, upon approval of the Select Board, to borrow the sum of eight million dollars and to appropriate said sum for purposes of paying the costs of the following capital improvements, including all costs incidental and related thereto as recommended by the Capital Improvement Program Committee. One, purchase a new fire truck. Two, Mashpee Public Schools HVAC replacement design, engineering, and construction and energy audit. Three, town hall HVAC water piping design and construction. Four, police department HVAC replacement design, engineering, and construction. And five, DPW roof replacement design, engineering, and construction, provided, however, that any borrowing authorized hereunder shall be expressly subject to and contingent upon approval by the voters of the town of a ballot question to exclude from the limitations of Proposition Two and a Half, General Law, Chapter C, Fifty-Nine, Section Twenty-One C, the amounts required to pay the principal and interest on any bonds, notes, or certificates of indebtedness issued hereunder.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Number Eleven by a vote of seven-zero.
Is there any discussion on Article Eleven?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I had, my name is Tim Martin. I need to give my address.
Yes.
What was it?
Thank you.
Seven Russell Road. I just, I admit to not having done my ad, homework adequately, and I just wanted to hear, can someone give us a summary of how, you know, we're looking forward to the Proposition Two and a Half Override here later on, and I'm just wanting, can summarize, someone summarize for us how frequently in Mashpee we've done a Proposition Two and a Half Override? And like, what was it for? Is that, is that an okay question? How often is it that we do a Two and a Half? That Mashpee has done a Proposition Two and a Half Override? And what was it for? I mean, I don't know, maybe that's too general, but someone take a stab at that.
I'll allow some latitude to asking that question prematurely to the article that's actually at issue.
Yeah, well-
Does anyone have a response to that?
This is contingent on the Two and a Half.
Does anyone have a response to his question?
I would defer to Finance or Town Manager.
I know that there have been several debt exclusions that have been voted on, sewer being one of them. The last Two and a Half Override, in the context that I believe the question was asked, that I do not recall.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Alexander Watt, One Twenty-Nine Pimlico Pond Road. I rise in opposition to this article. We've just passed a capital improvement budget of some six million dollars, five million dollars of which is for HVAC systems for the schools. It seems to me that the purpose of the Capital Improvement Committee is to manage our capital needs on an annual basis and allocate the funds that are necessary for that. We don't see any details in here on how much is needed for each of these projects. Moreover, a Two and a Half exclusion is, and always has been to my knowledge, to authorize single, unitary, significant projects. For instance, the, the building of a school, this school here. And what we have here is a mishmash of different purposes without any allocation of funds. And it seems to me that we've just authorized a twelve million dollar exclusion, that another eight, that another eight million dollars is just simply unwarranted at this time. Those needs can be met later in the next fiscal year through allocation through the capital improvement budget.
Next.
Okay. Ken Dabrowski, Greif Field Landing. I wrote an article about this that appeared in The Enterprise and may have caught me on the public comment section, so I'm going to be brief for the folks that didn't. Basically, I support the, the article. I mean, you know, you look at what we got here. The fire truck, I know that was a little controversial, but the rest of this stuff is like, if you, the roof, leaky roofs don't get better. I mean, the rest of this stuff, it's, if it's busted, you gotta fix it. The problem we have here is we're paying this thing backward, okay? We should be paying this kind of stuff forward. Let me just, you know, I got ahead of myself a little bit. Even though I support it, I think this is a bad idea, okay? What we're doing is we are funding operating expenses with debt, okay? None of these things create any additional capabilities. These are just like repairs. The only thing we're doing is extending the life of the buildings, and that's it, most of it's built. But my point is, you know, we should have been paying, you know, what we're going to end up with here is instead of a smaller tax increases in prior years, we're going to end up with a bigger one going forward. If you just run the numbers, okay? A, a five percent, which is the town treasurer's estimate on the interest rate on this thing, the twenty-year assets get increased by sixty percent, and the five-year assets get increased by fifteen percent. And the problem you have here is that if you don't get out of this cycle, you're constantly overpaying for these assets. We gotta get into a mode where we fu- fund these, that we squirrel the money away before we need to buy this stuff, and instead of going into debt. And I discussed this with Mr. Collins, and he's got the idea. I mean, he, he understands what needs to be done. The problem is, from a taxpayer's perspective, when these guys come to us and ask us for a tax increase because they need to fund fixed assets in the future, we gotta support them. So, again, yeah, what we're doing right now is suboptimal, and I, I'm getting a little frustrated because we're never out in front of anything. We're always paying catch-up. And that's why we're, we're, again, we paint ourselves into a corner here where we gotta do something that, again, I, I, from an economic and financial management perspective, doesn't make any sense, but we gotta do it. So.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Nicole Bartlett, Twenty-Eight Sampson's Mill. I'm the Chair of the Mashpee School Committee. I can't respond to all the questions, but I wanted to address the gentleman's concern about the CIP funds that we already approved and the previous, or capital stabilization and CIP. Of the five million that was allocated for HVAC upgrades for the school buildings, the schools are providing almost four million dollars. A portion of that is ESSER funds, one point five million that we were granted during COVID that we must spend. We surveyed our almost one thousand families with students in our district. They wanted us to allocate that towards HVAC upgrades, and so we're trying to figure out a way to leverage almost three million in choice funds, actually think it's two point six with the ESSER funds. So, a mil, the remaining million comes through capital stabilization. I think everyone here is aware that the Department of Public Works actually owns our school buildings, and they've been looking at this issue for several years. I think that this request is a pretty modest and strategic investment, considering our original estimate came in at twenty-six million dollars. So, this is a fraction of what was initially considered for these buildings. This, we're going to do whatever we can with these funds to upgrade these buildings, all three of our buildings, and benefit as many students and families and employees of this town as we can. So, I hope that answers some of those questions.
Any further discussion on this article? Moving on to a vote, this does require a two-thirds vote. We'll try as usual for the unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I'd say the ayes have it. And that constitutes, therefore, a two-thirds vote. To my ear. Moving on to Article Twelve, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Eighty-Three, Sections Fifteen C and Fifteen D, relative to the assessment of interest on the apportionment of unpaid balances of sewer betterment assessments.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twelve by a vote of five to zero.
Is there any discussion on Article Twelve? Is there any discussion on Article Twelve? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That passes. Article Thirteen, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of five hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars to provide for road improvements, projects in, for the town in accordance with the provisions of Chapter Ninety of Massachusetts General Laws, and to authorize a treasurer with the approval of the Select Board to borrow said sum of five hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars under pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Sections Seven and Eight, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town, therefore.
Second. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Thirteen by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article Thirteen? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article Fourteen, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article Fourteen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Fourteen by a vote of seven to zero.
Anyone care to discuss Article Fourteen? Apparently not. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article Fifteen, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Fifteen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Fifteen by a vote of seven to zero.
Discussion on Article Fifteen? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article Sixteen, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Mod, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Sixteen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Sixteen by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article Sixteen? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article Seventeen, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article Seventeen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Seventeen by a vote of five to zero.
Discussion on Article Seventeen? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article Eighteen, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Eighteen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eighteen by a vote of five to zero.
Discussion on Article Eighteen? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article Nineteen, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to approve Article Nineteen as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Nineteen by a vote of five to zero.
Any discussion on this article? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article Number Twenty, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Twenty as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twenty by a vote of five to zero.
Any discussion on Article Twenty? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article Twenty-One, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Twenty-One as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twenty-One by a vote of five to zero.
Any discussion on Article Twenty-One? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That's unanimous. Every once in a while, I hear the theme for the Old Spice commercial. I have to kind of, um, which is a good reminder to silence your cellphones, I suppose. Moving on to Article Twenty-Two, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Twenty-Two as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twenty-Two by a vote of five to zero.
Discussion on Article Twenty-Two? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article Twenty-Three, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Twenty-Three as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twenty-Three by a vote of five to zero.
Any discussion on Twenty-Three? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Did someone say nay? It's unanimous. Article Twenty-Four, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Twenty-Four as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase or take any other ar, action related thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twenty-Four by a vote of five to zero.
Any discussion on Article Twenty-Four? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Unanimously. Article Twenty-Five, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Twenty-Five as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twenty-Five by a vote of seven to zero.
Is there any discussion of Article Twenty-Five? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Twenty-Five say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Now, that required a two-thirds vote, and it passed unanimously. Article Twenty-Six, Ms. Wyman-Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Twenty-Six as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twenty-Six by a vote of seven to zero.
Any discussion on Article Twenty-Six? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article Twenty-Seven, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Twenty-Seven as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twenty-Seven by a vote of seven to zero.
Discussion on Article Twenty-Seven? Yes, sir.
Brian Everett, Ford's Drive, Mashpee. If boat motors over ten horsepower are so detrimental to water quality, then why has this restriction not been recommended for all of Mashpee waters? Mashpee Wakeby has experienced cyanobacteria blooms, a boat rea, boat-related fatality, swan getting struck and killed by a high-power bass boat, and numerous complaints of bad behavior on the lake and islands found there. No call for a horsepower restriction there. I just don't see how, um, I just don't see how this can get passed. You know, all of our waters in Mashpee are impeded by poor water quality. And singling out Mash, uh, Santuit for a horsepower restriction is uncalled for. Why can't we make it just no wake zone or something like that?
Anyone care to respond? Your question is rhetorical. Next.
She's coming.
Oh, sorry. It's not rhetorical.
So we all know Santuit Pond's history of cyanobacteria. It's been severely degraded since the nineties.
Could, could, could you share your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Ashley Fisher, the Director of Natural Resources with the Town Mashpee. Also resident, Twenty-One Jonesburg. Um, we all know Santuit Pond has experienced cyanobacteria blooms for over a decade now. Um, the rationale behind the horsepower restriction is eleven feet in its deepest point. Phosphorus acts very differently from nitrogen. Phosphorus is, when resuspended, can proliferate an algal bloom. In the estuaries, that's completely different. We're looking at nitrogen as the limiting agent. That acts differently than phosphorus. Nitrogen doesn't sink to the bottom where phosphorus does. Every time a boat goes up and down Santuit Pond, you're stirring up an entire layer of bottom sediment that's nutrient-rich in phosphorus.
I tried not to get in trouble tonight, but here I am. Tom Fadala, Sixty Willand Road. Um, the point is, Santuit Pond, as was mentioned, the deepest point is eleven feet. The average is seven feet. All the other ponds are much, much deeper. And they don't have the massive phosphorus load that Santuit Pond has. It gets stirred up anytime anybody runs a prop across. And even ten horsepower is going to mess it up. So, I mean, this is totally logical. It has nothing to do with any of the other ponds. I mean, that's a total misrepresentation of the situation in the other ponds. They don't have the phosphorus problem and the shallows, okay? That's, that's the point. On one pond, we have this problem that this will, this will solve.
Next, next speaker.
Matt Jallowee, Deerfoot Circle. Um, I was born and raised in Mashpee, and I was lucky enough to be able to swim in Santuit Pond when the biggest thing you had to worry about was a leech and not a skin infection. Um, so I really care a lot about these waterways. I care about a lot about the water in Mashpee. And I see this article as a way to get a concrete step in, uh, step in place to improve our waterways. It's not complicated. This will help our waterways. This will help Santuit Pond. Um, and I'd really like to see the pond be able to be used by all the people in the town of Mashpee as opposed to a couple dozen boaters. I think it's really important that we regain control of our water and preserve it for future generations.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. George Schmidt, Seventeenth Santuit Lane. And I'm here representing myself, obviously, and Bryant's Neck Association, all, all who have been contacted and have responded in favor of passage of this article. And it includes, actually, two people with boats that, uh, will, they will no longer be able to use them after the year grace period because they just can't get through. The, the horsepower is too big. They both, in both cases, they said that they were in favor of this because they need to know and we need to have protection of the pond, whatever we can do is possible. Thank you.
Next speaker.
I'm Nathan Adams of Eighty-One Edgewater Road. I live right on Santuit Pond. And so I share, uh, my concern about the pond. But I'd like to remind everyone, it's, how did we get here? Because it's not so much about people who care about the pond and people who don't care about the pond. We did a comprehensive study in this town about thirteen years ago. It was two thousand and ten. And there's a hundred and eighty-three pages of information of what we could do. They never talked about boating restrictions. They talked about searing. They talked about road runoff. They talked about lawn fertilizers. And we got the circulators in the pond as a result of that. But that was thirteen years ago. We don't have a sewer, which there's reasons why. But we never addressed the lawn fertilizers, and we easily could have addressed the road runoff. Only recently, thirteen years later, is the first project being taken on. And I just get so frustrated with this. I was in contact with some of the biggest supporters of this article. And we're talking about what we could do. But accidentally, the truth did come out in that exchange. Because I said, why not lawn fertilizer ban? I'd support that. And I can't wait to connect to the sewer. I'll pay the betterment fee. Because lawn fertilizer bans are not popular. I like green grass as much as the next guy, but I stopped fertilizing because I was hurting the pond. And the thing is, is that people don't want to give up their green grass. And so instead, it's much easier to blame it on the boats. If we're going to blame it on the boats that they're stirring up the sediment, well, why is it that the clean water in that pond is down at the shallow end? And the dirtier water is up at the deep end? And these people that want to get rid of the boats, they have, some of them, they live on a property, six, seven acres, of perfect green grass. So they can put all the lawn fertilizer they want in the pond, but I can't have a big boat. And by the way, I only have a four, a five horsepower boat. So I personally stand nothing to lose here. I just don't see how this makes it better, how this article can make it better. We actually need to solve the problem, which is the road runoff and the lawn fertilizers. That is something we could work together on and actually make a difference.
Are, are we ready to vote on this article? One more speaker.
Um, I've been a boat builder my whole life. And I have to tell you, instead of putting a horsepower running, because most people in Mashpee have boats with bigger engines than ten horsepower. So what you're doing is just eliminating a lot of the people in Mashpee from going on that pond. You're much better off putting on a speed limit because a ninety horsepower motor going ten miles an hour is going to not throw much, much more debris than a ten horsepower motor going ten miles an hour. Put a speed limit on the pond if that's the problem. You know, don't, don't take away access to the pond for people that have a boat with bigger than ten horsepower on it.
Next speaker. Next speaker who has not already spoken, unless it's real brief.
It's real brief. The reason we have a problem at Santuit Pond is a hundred years' worth of phosphorus runoff from the cranberry bog that surround the whole thing. That's seventy-eight percent of the problem. That's why stirring up the bottom is the problem. It's not fertilizer, it's not sewers, it's stirring up the bottom. Period.
Final speaker.
Hi, thank you. I'll be brief. Um, E.J. Mills-Brennan. Uh, live on the pond. My family's lived there for several years. Probably one of the first homes with, you know, like, a real fireplace. They were all camps. So I've witnessed a whole, a whole lifetime. My parents came from the war, war two, and my father built that house. So I can vouch for a lot of things that people are saying positive here. And I'm also understand people saying negative stuff. But it is very shallow. people saying negative stuff, but it is very shallow. My question is, I'd like clarification on this, uh, abutter, which I am. And if twenty-seven and I think thirty-six and thirty-seven are also, they have this pass for a year's pass. Am I to understand that that means that if I had a boat, if I use, I don't use motorized vehicles, um, nobody in my family does, um, not on that pond anyway. Does that pass mean that if you live a, as an abutter, you have a year to go ahead and use something more than ten miles per, you know, ten miles per hour, not ten miles per hour, whatever it is, the limit, gives you a pass to go over the limit of speed? Is that what that says? And it says, so, so we're extending it.
Is there, is there a brief answer to the question on whether there's a speed limit? If I'm understanding you correctly.
But does the pass give residents of, of Santuit Pond another year to go above the limited?
Yes.
To my understand, to, to my understanding, it does allow for a one-year grace period for director.
See, and that to me, that doesn't make sense, just like the gentleman who talked about the fertilizer. I didn't stay on that fertilizer, Santuit, save Santuit, whatever it was. I didn't stay because you allowed fertilizer for people who, who lived there. You allowed, you extended the use of fertilizer. I use spring water. I don't drink from my well because I live on Santuit Pond. It's pretty bad. So I would just like to say, we gotta start putting these extensions and cut it. Cut it for all the ponds, you know? Uh, I, we gotta have water, all of us. There's enough fish that used to be in that Santuit Pond. Catfish, yellow perch, chinas, costar herin, pickerel. Catfish, I already said, many of them. Crayfish, you can eat crayfish. Enough to share. Wouldn't it be lovely if all the residents of Mashpee could have fresh fish from Santuit Pond again? Delicious pickerel. They hover all around the deep, deep springs. I've witnessed the most beautiful things on that pond. And I've witnessed all these homes, thousands now.
I think you've made your point. Are we ready to vote on this article? All those in favor of Article twenty-seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. You might note that this article comes up again as Article forty-two by way of petition. Twenty, Article number twenty-eight, Mr. Cotton. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article twenty-eight as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto.
Second. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-eight by a vote of seven-zero.
Any discussion on this article? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes by majority. Article twenty-nine, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town's vote to approve Article twenty-nine as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article twenty-nine by a vote of seven-zero.
Any discussion on Article twenty-nine? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously. Article number thirty, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article thirty as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty by a vote of five to zero.
Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On April nine, Mary Wagoner, Chair of the Planning Board. On April nineteenth, the Planning Board held a public hearing on this article and recommends approval, um, by a vote of three to one.
Any discussion on this article? Requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article thirty-one, Ms. Wyman Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article thirty-one as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty-one by a vote of five to zero.
Planning Board.
Mary Wagoner, Chair of the Planning Board. On April nineteenth, the Planning Board held a public hearing on this article and recommends approval by a vote of three to one.
Discussion on Article thirty-one. Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, this does require two-thirds vote. Those opposed, say no, nay. Uh, passed by two-thirds. Article thirty-two, Mr. Wheaton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I move the town vote to approve Article thirty-two as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty-two by a vote of five to zero.
And Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Wagoner, Chair of the Planning Board. On April nineteenth, the Planning Board held a public hearing on this article and recommends its approval by a vote of three to one.
Discussion on Article thirty-two.
Yes, Phyllis Sprout, ninety-one Quinequistan Avenue. I would like to know what the opinion of, what was the negative vote on these past three articles? If someone could please explain that?
They're all unanimous. You, you wish to know how many voted against it?
I, I would like to know why somebody voted against these three articles.
I believe that person is not here, so I don't wanna put words in their mouth, but I don't think there was anything in the minutes regarding that, Phyllis.
Ms. Barbie.
Lynn Barbie, seventy-three Surf Drive. I just wanna thank the Planning Board for coming back a year later with the solution for us being able to really promote solar in this town. If you all remembered last May, we were able to get off the record in the, the motion that would have not solved our problem. And I really think that the Planning Board has done a good job to try to make sure that we protect the wetlands, that we make solar very available, and we do it properly. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article thirty-two? This requires a two-thirds vote as well. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Passes by a two-thirds majority. Article thirty-three, Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article thirty-three as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating thereto. Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty-three by a vote of seven-zero.
Discussion on Article thirty-three. Guess not. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. It passes. Article thirty-four, Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article thirty-four as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty-four by a vote of seven-zero.
Any discussion on Article thirty-four? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article thirty-five, Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article thirty-five as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty-five by a vote of seven-zero.
Discussion on thirty-five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, nay. Unanimous. Article thirty-six, Ms. Wyman Columbo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article thirty-six as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty-six by a vote of six-zero.
Question. Is there any discussion on Article thirty-six?
Yes. Uh, Phyllis Sprout, ninety-one Quinequistan Avenue. In Article thirty-six, under jurisdiction, there's a rather lengthy list of descriptions of bodies of water, which we can expect to find in these areas. And we are asking that, um, property owners be aware and, um, consider all these bodies of water when they're developing or just managing their property. I wanna call into question one particular type of body of water, which is a vernal pool. And these pools may not show up from one year to the next. To me, it's a glorified puddle and I just don't see the logic of property owners being held hostage in the way they use their property by a puddle. And I would like to know, um, well, I'd like to amend this article so that we would remove the words vernal pool.
Mr. Moderator, I don't believe that's within, um, I think the state defines the wetlands and I don't believe it's within our ability to, um, remove vernal pools from the consideration. Um, if our conservation agent, Mr. McManus, has, um, anything more to add to that, um...
Well, I would like it better defined because a vernal pool can show up on a very wet spring and it may not show up for years afterwards. And so I think it's really important that we clarify and make our definitions clear.
Let me just interrupt here for a moment. Um, so the, the speaker has proposed an amendment. Uh, in order for that to be considered, you must make that a motion to amend the article. Would you care to do that?
If this is a state requirement in the description, then no, because I know state regulations are just gonna trump everything. But I think it is important that if the state has a description of what a vernal pool is, we need to make it clear now.
Next speaker.
Drew McManus, Town of Mashpee Conservation Agent. So a vernal pool is a resource area. It's a wetland, uh, also known as isolated vegetated wetland. Vernal pools are listed, uh, protected under the Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program as rare species habitat. Every vernal pool that's a certified vernal pool is automatically rare species habitat because it contains species of salamander, uh, and certain species of frog, um, that are either threatened or endangered in the state of Massachusetts. So by their nature, vernal pools are, um, they can come and go, but, and there is a process for certifying a vernal pool and to certify an area does not function as a vernal pool, but it cannot, under any circumstances, be removed as a resource area under the wetlands protection.
Further discussion on Article thirty-six?
My name is Virginia Scharfenberg, three P. Quarell. Uh, my husband and I have been, um, environmentalists and ecological restoration experts for over twenty years here in Mashpee. We've worked with a lot of conservation permitting. We've worked with, um, residents, actually, all over the Cape to restore wetlands and to create native habitats throughout people's properties that enhance, um, the wildlife pathways and everything that we need to preserve our waterways. So I am one hundred percent in favor of this.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Irene Chekovitch, Sunset Strip. I've been a proud resident of Mashpee for twenty-nine years, but sadly, I'm not proud of how we've neglected our waterways for decades. As the late Brian Howes warned us repeatedly, if we did nothing to fix our waters, they would get worse. And guess what? He was right. Over the years, I've witnessed countless meetings where residents have pleaded with our town leaders, "When will you do something to fix our waters?" And contrary to the myth embraced by many, while Mashpee is finally making progress with a sewer system, according to past experts and current consultants alike, sewers alone will not fix our ponds and waterways. So what will? A critical step is to reduce the flow of nutrients into our waters because fewer nutrients mean fewer algae blooms. But whereas sewers and stormwater retrofits will take years to implement, there are some actions that we can take right now. One of these is the proposed modest increase in wetland vegetated buffers in both Articles thirty-six and thirty-seven as recommended by our current consultants, Fusen O'Neill, who were hired specifically to help us fix our deteriorating waters. These and other experts agree, adequate vegetated buffers help fil- filter out nutrients from stormwater before it hits our waterways. And isn't it obvious that our current buffers are not enough? Originally, I had planned for a kinder, gentler message throughout, and I will try to be civil. Um, but when I saw the misleading emails and websites this weekend paid for by Cape and Islands Association of Realtors, I had to modify my comments just a bit. True confession, at one point, I myself was a real estate agent. And as an agent who tried always to practice their code of ethics, including honesty and integrity, I'm appalled at their blatant misinformation campaign, deliberate omission of critical facts, and quite frankly, scare tactics. I'm disappointed that this outside entity sitting in West Yarmouth is trying to bully Mashpee residents. Exactly whose interests are they trying to serve? When they scare us with threats of lower property values, how about asking them, "What will happen to all property values if Mashpee continues to be the land of the toxic stew?" In conclusion, I am concluding, why do we continue to hire consultants to help us fix our waterways and then totally ignore their advice? After decades of neglect, our town is finally acting on this recommended no-cost step that can help our waters without delay. Let's not let these special interest outsiders bully us into voting no, where a no vote on Articles thirty-six and thirty-seven will literally mean our waters will continue to decline. Cleaner bays, ponds, and beaches benefit us all. Let's do our part and say yes, so that right now, they can all start to heal. Thank you.
Next speaker. The line, the line, sir, in front is starting in the rear apparently, so wait your turn. Yes, ma'am. You're welcome to sit there, though, in the meantime.
Good evening. Um, Susan Dangle, Kattouet Road. I'm also the petitioner for the, the two articles that follow. They directly mirror the, these two Articles thirty-six and thirty-seven, and I'm thrilled that we are bringing these to a vote tonight. If you're here tonight to vote no, based on the information campaign that we've seen over the last few days, because you've been told that they are a land grab or a government overreach, you've been misled. Interestingly, as Irene mentioned, it's the Cape Cod real estate lobby perpetuating this fear mongering, and I wonder why. Let me tell you why they are wrong. Our conservation team, our town planner, and our Department of Natural Resources have held public hearings and meetings, circulated answers to frequently asked questions in both public and on Zoom. Repeatedly, the answers that residents have asked about their property indicate that if these new buffer zones impact the development of a parcel, the owner can work with conservation and, if necessary, the state to find a workable solution for building. Period. Period. Might a resident have to change a design or add more plantings? Yes. But that's why these articles are being presented. We must use every possible means to stop the enormous flow of nutrients into our fragile waters. Sound science indicates that the larger the buffer zone and deeper the vegetated buffer, the less polluting nutrients will make it to the water. Thankfully, we agreed tonight to continue with the construction of our first wastewater treatment plant, but the completion is still years ahead of us. These bylaw changes are merely one tool we have to make change and stem the decline in our, in our water. If we can't pass these bylaws, which do not take land from residents, I fear for our town. For the unfounded chant of unbuildable will most certainly turn to unsellable. Please vote yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Alexander Watt, Pimlico Pond Road. I'm not really against this article, but I did wanna correct some misconceptions about, the lady had the question about the vernal pool. Certainly, it's a, a recognized resource area and that cannot be changed. But what's at issue in this amendment is that we're talking about increasing the buffer zone, not the resource area itself. So my understanding is it's going from... So my understanding is it's going from, I don't know, 100 presently to 150 feet. So it would be possible for the gentle lady to make an amendment excluding the increase in the buffer zone with respect to vernal pools. Just so that she's clear about that, a number of people's...
I don't know that that would be her intention, but I would submit that that's beyond the scope of the article.
An amendment would be in order, it seems to me, to accept vernal pools.
Let's do this. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in opposition to this article? And then I'll consult with town council. So the first person to raise their hand is next.
Permission to speak, Mr. Moderator?
Sure.
I'm not a registered voter here, but have had land here since 1970.
That being the case, we need permission of the folks here to speak. Although, someone make a motion? Second? Motion's made, is there a second? All those in favor of letting this non-voter speak, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. I'm sorry, sir, you've been declined. Next.
Hi there, 79 Sunset Circle. I am not a voter here. I am a landowner.
Same question. Does someone care to make a motion to allow this nice person to speak? I do not hear a motion. Is there a second? All those in favor of allowing this non-voter to speak, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Sorry, ma'am. Next.
Yeah, Gary Briggs again, Massasoia Avenue. I'm an escapee from California, the People's Republic of California. And we had a thing out there that started off exactly like this called the California Coastal Commission, and it turned into a monster that devoured everything. Every construction project turned into a lawsuit. It, it, it is one of the most hated things in the state of California because every year, they grabbed another 100, every year, they grabbed more, they grabbed more, they grabbed more, they grabbed more. We, if this was just limited to 150 feet and that would be it, you know, I could support it, but I, I've seen things like this turn into a monster. All you have to do is Google California Coastal Commission and understand what I'm talking about. So I oppose this unless there's some way to limit overall the eventual scope of this. So I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Anybody else in the back care to speak to this motion?
Hi.
Yes, sir.
I need help. Alrighty, alright. Hi, Jack Nate's, Poolport Road, Mashpee. So I'm against this, these proposals. One of the reasons is that according to conservation, that if they, if they bring the thing from 100 to buffer zone to 150 feet, they say that it will provide more wildlife habitat. And I have to say, where's this wildlife habitat coming from? Because I go to my 100, I add, I add 50, I look out my window at this space, and every day, we get squirrels and rabbits and chipmunks and turkeys and coyotes, deer, right? Now you move it forward, 50, I'm still going to have coyotes and birds and ducks and turkeys. And so I don't see, I said to myself initially, I don't see where this increased habitat is coming from. And then I was reading a little closer of what conservation was saying, and they talk about mitigation. And I said, aha, this is where they're going to get their increased habitat. Does everyone here know what mitigation is? Let me give you an example. I live in John's Pond. We had an old decrepit cottage with a, no basement, and, uh, it was a terrible place. So my wife and I, we tore it down, we put up a nice house. We improved the town, we improved the lot, we improved everything. But the house was inside the 100, the 100-foot buffer. And so conservation comes out, and what do they say? They say, well, listen, we'll let you build that house, but you're going to put 18 plants down here along the shoreline. 18, right? And they have to be native plants, and you can't touch them, right? You can't cut them, your kids can't play there anymore, no more lawn chairs in this big area on my, on my shoreline, right? So I went along with it, so we built the house. Then I need, replaced by retaining wall, because it was old railroad ties, they were rotting out.
I think we get your drift, sir, if you could get to the point.
I'm getting to the point, excuse me. So I go, I go to, uh, I go, so I go to conservation, they come down, take a look, and they say, we'll let you put up a nice retaining wall, but this area over here, we're going to designate a resource area, so you can't, again, kids can't play there, ba, ba, ba. So as of today, within the 100, I've lost access to 62% of my, 62%, I have 38% left. Now you want to roll it to 150, what if I want to put a shed in the 150? Then my 32% is going to go down to 22%. So I'm just saying that, I'm just, I'm just saying that, you know, that this increased habitat is through mitigation, this mitigation, we've mitigated it enough, we don't need any more mitigation.
All right, that's, uh, thank you. You've, you've set it up.
Sorry, one more thing to say.
No, I'm sorry, we're going to move on. Now, the proper way to move the question is for someone to come to the microphone and be recognized for that purpose. Until that happens, I will go on to the next speaker. Thank you, sir, you may sit down. Anybody else care to speak to this article?
Thank you. My name's Pamela McCarthy. I live on Leamington Lane. I absolutely support this article, and I also just want to give a shout out to the Conservation Commission and our conservation agent because they have been dealing with some really horrendous smears and attacks by certain people in this town, and I really want to just stand up for the volunteers who come out and take their time to help this town and are getting honestly, a lot of grief in return.
Next speaker, Ms. Barbie, there's another speaker.
I'd like to call the vote.
Would you make that a motion?
I moved to call the vote.
Is there a, is there a second to the motion to? All those in favor of moving to a vote on this article, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. You folks may sit down for the moment, and moving on to the motion of the question itself. All those in favor of this article, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Let's try that once again. All those in favor of the article, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Get out your cards.
Here we go. This is going to take a while, yes.
So we go by that number even if it's changed. Are the tellers positioned and ready? All those voters who wish to vote in favor of this article, please raise your voting card until it's acknowledged. All those who care to vote against Article 36 and say nay, in effect, raise your voter cards, please. Well, you don't actually have to say it. But thank you for trying.
Yeah, it doesn't even look close.
No.
They were just loud.
As there were 333 votes in favor and 113 opposed, the motion carries. I might note that unless I'm having a hearing problem, the people that said no speak a lot louder than those that say yes. At halftime, Celtic 66, 76, or 63. Third period, the other way around, 68 to 65. FYI. Article 37, Mr. Whedon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article 37 as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 37 by a vote of 6-0.
Is there any discussion on this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 30? I'm sorry, sir.
Ed Clemwart, Sunset Circle. Seems I didn't get to speak on Article 36. I thought I'd speak on this one here. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 131, Section 40, establish 100 feet as a buffer zone. I kind of agree with that fellow from California who said, well, what's going on over there? And as you increase these things, I think you're going to have a major problem. What new studies justify an increase of 50 feet? Was this figure someone pulled out of a hat, or are we trying to appease someone's complaint? It's touted as a means to improve water quality. There are many programs now in place to improve the quality of our water. Matter of fact, we just voted, I think, on a $12 million water process, wastewater program. Part of that's going to come from the Clean Waters Committee. If you're a resident who doesn't live near these resources, it sounds like a good idea because you're not affected. In a way, we all will be affected due to possible increase in bureaucracy costs. For several years, we had one agent to oversee and implement the conservation laws. Now we have an assistant, and this extra 50-feet proposal may eventually require another assistant. In addition to salaries, there are associated costs such as another vehicle, insurance on the vehicles, fuel, maintenance, and so forth, health insurance and pension retirement plans. Why did we need an additional assistant in the first place? Did Mashpee require some new property? Under this proposal, there are some waterfront homes, frontal property area, which is the area from the front of the house to the road, would now be in a 50-foot zone. Does that mean they would now have to get a permit to plant shrubs, add a storage shed, park their boat there for the winter, or even put a doghouse there? The question and answer that letter that Drew McManus sent out stated that present homes would be exempted. If so, that should be stated in the articles. A future conservation agent may not abide by these agreements. What if a waterfront homeowner, a new buyer, wants to improve or rebuild? Under the existing laws, you are permitted to do so on the same footprint. However, would the frontal property that is in the 50-foot zone now be subject to the new rules? What if you own the waterfront lot that is only 150 feet deep and that you possibly plan to build a retirement home on? Under this proposal, that property would become worthless. There are many other issues such as ADR permits and order of conditions. Order of conditions are very expensive and time-consuming. The proposal as written leaves many unanswered questions. We don't need another level of bureaucracy and regulations. I'm opposed to it. Now, I got a side note over here. If you really want to reduce water pollution, reduce water pollution, you need to do something about the ever-growing population of geese. I don't know where they go to die, but I've never seen one die yet or dead. They don't necessarily, according to studies I looked at, they don't necessarily poop in the water, but they do poop on adjacent land. When it rains, that poop gets washed into the waterways. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, Mr. McManus.
Drew McManus, Conservation Agent of town of Mashpee. It's interesting that he mentioned geese because by expanding naturally vegetated buffer strips, you actually prevent geese from getting out of the water onto your property. It actually slows them down, it provides a barrier, but that's just anecdotal. The, the reason we have an assistant agent, I wanted to clarify that first, is to manage our over 1,400 acres of conservation land, so that position is entirely justified, plus we have a lot of areas of wetland jurisdiction that we need assistance enforcing. So I don't think there's any question as to the need of our justification of an assistant agent position. In terms of the studies, there's been many studies put out there and put onto our website and mentioned at our public information meetings that justify the need for, or the benefits of an expanded naturally vegetated buffer strip. There's more nutrient uptake, it provides more habitat, so the science is there and it's well-vetted. In terms of any sort of concerns about property taking or restricting the use of your property as a result of this proposal, that's simply not true. If you have a small property and this expanded buffer zone is going to put into question the buildability of that property, there are waiver opportunities, as there are today, to work with the commission in trying to figure out a balance between development and environmental protection. So, thank you.
Further discussion on Article 37. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It's passed. All of these subsequent articles are by petition, which does not make them any less important, but unlike what we've done up to now, it's up to the petitioner to present these articles. So we move on to Article number 38.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve McDonald from Watson Drive. Make a motion, I move the town vote to approve Article 38 as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto. Thank you.
Finance Committee.
Second.
Second.
Yes, was there a second?
Yep.
Thank you, sorry about that. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article thirty-eight by a vote of six-to-one.
Select Board is welcome to make their recommendation if they choose or not. Any discussion on Article thirty-eight? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Unanimous. Thank you, sir. Article thirty-nine. Ms. Dangle.
Mr. Moderator, I move, based on the fact that there was a vote on Article thirty-six, that is the mirror image of this article, I move to postpone this article indefinitely.
Any discussion? All those in favor of indefinite postponement of this article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article number forty.
Mr. Moderator, again, based on the fact that Article thirty-seven had a vote, I move to postpone Article forty indefinitely.
Second.
Discussion on Article forty. Hearing none, all those in favor of indefinite postponement say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. It passes. Article forty-one.
Mr. Moderator, this Howard Rosen, Blue Castle Drive. I move the town to approve Article forty-one as written in the warrant.
Is there a second? Discussion on Article forty-one. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article forty-two.
Mr. Moderator, based on the vote on Article twenty-seven, I move to indefinitely postpone Article forty-two.
Any discussion on indefinite postponement? All those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article forty-two say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Unanimous. Item Article forty-three. Ms. Barbie.
Lynn Barbie, Seventy-three Surf Drive. As with the previous, given that we've already had a vote on the same or very similar solar bylaw, I move to indefinitely postpone this article.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of indefinite postponement of this article, say aye. This does require two-thirds vote. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Unanimous. Article forty-four.
Lynn Barbie, again, Seventy-three Surf Drive. I move to indefinitely postpone this article, based on the previous vote of the other solar article.
Second.
Discussion. Two-thirds vote again here. All those in favor of indefinite postponement say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Article number forty-five. Mr. McCarthy.
Glenn McCarthy from Sixteen Jeep Place. I move the town vote to approve Article forty-five as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, or take any other action relating thereto.
Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee does not recommend approval of Article forty-five by a vote of six to zero.
Planning Board.
On April nineteenth, the Planning Board held a public hearing on this article and does not recommend approval of Article forty-five by a vote of three to one.
Discussion. Mr. McCarthy.
I'd like to say a few things. I've put in a lot of work on this. First, I'd like to say thanks to so many people on both sides of this debate who recognize the problem that we have and the need to fix it. We need a solution that protects neighbors, neighborhoods, protects our waters and our wetlands, and also protects homeowners and their right to rebuild, and protects investors who need certainty in decisions. Raise and Replace seventeen point one is not that solution, and that's why I petitioned to have it repealed. Second, I'd like to correct some kind of, I guess, confused misinformation. This is not gonna stop your kitchen from being renovated. It has nothing to do with renovating your kitchen or even putting a dish in on your house. It's also not gonna stop you from raising and replacing or rebuilding your house. What it does is it takes us back to 2018 to a set of bylaws that we had for decades that worked, that worked reasonably. And in 2018, we had this passed. We've seen an explosion of these excessive structures. There's been seventy of them, and they hurt the neighbors. They hurt the people who live next door. They harm our waters. They add massive amounts of capacity for discharge of nitrogen nutrients. They have multiple sources of water, showers, dishwashers. They're capacity adders. So it's really about finding a reasonable way to redo it. And then finish up. What does it do? It fixes a mistake that I believe we made in 2018. It takes us... It stops us from putting too much house on too little land. You can put a reasonable house there. And it limits the growth and capacity of wastewater discharge, which also will limit our spending for future sewer and wastewater treatment. And it stops Raise and Replace from coming to your pond or your neighborhood like John's Pond next, where it's coming. And it's not a good thing when it comes in next to you, and so I would ask that you vote in favor and repeal this, and then we work on finding something that's better. Thank you.
Further discussion on this article. The gentleman in the rear.
Fred Nadoff, Overlook Knoll Road. I actually can't believe we're back talking about this, to be honest with you. Just to remind everybody, right, the reason that Raise and Replace was needed was that the old bylaw that is being suggested we go back to was vague, was open for interpretation, and if I remember correctly, back when we voted on this, there were eighteen people who couldn't even build their house because this thing was tied up. You know, the way it worked is almost any abutter or neighbor, for almost any reason that either was real or could be made up, could cause somebody to be in the courts for years. It's happened for a number of people, myself included, when that happened. So, you know, my recollection is, you know, changing it back is only gonna hurt the people that are currently in the smaller homes, smaller cottages, on smaller lots, right? They're the ones with the non-conforming, the existing nonconformities. They're the ones that need this to stay the same so that they can put in their house the way they want, or rebuild the house the way they want. We're talking about existing nonconformities, which basically come around two things: lot coverage and setbacks. And those lot coverages and setbacks are the same ones that they're required to use when they build their new home. So if there's a difference in one of those, it requires a variance, which is already covered in the ZBA, in the planning, and all the other committees we have. So from my perspective, that, you know, we have all these committees, they know the bylaws better than us, they have the information on each and every one of these, and then they can look at it and see if it fits in within the requirements.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Arden Russell, Thirty-two Sturgis Lane. I'm speaking in support of Article forty-five. It's a necessary change to protect our community character, to stop squeezing out our year-round residents, and most importantly, to protect our degraded water and environment. I've been in attendance at zoning board meetings recently, and I've watched the deliberations and witnessed firsthand the total disregard for the neighbors' concerns and the effect on the neighborhood when someone comes forward with a Raise and Replace application. We must repeal Section one seventy-four point one to protect our interests, the residents, and the abutters, the neighbors, and return to the responsible zoning that existed prior for decades. Thank you.
Ms. Wagan.
Mary Wagan, Thirty-five Ashument Road, and I'm speaking here right now, not as the Chair of the Planning Board, but as Assistant. So I was the lone vote on the Planning Board. I support the repeal of this. In 2018, when it came to the Planning Board, I did not like seventeen point one for several reasons. One was that it didn't have the phrase "to the neighborhood," okay? So in that bylaw, it says that the town can't approve a Raise and Replace via a special permit from the Board of Appeals if it's detrimental. But it doesn't say detrimental to what, okay? It's supposed to say, by state statute, it's supposed to say detrimental to the neighborhood. So why does this matter? Well, if you watch proceedings on these matters, I'm telling you that the abutters' opinions and requests are not considered as heavily as they should be. If you look at two-twenty-eight, Waiting Path Lane, which is currently in its second court filing, it was disgusting to see how the abutters' requests and local neighbors who did not want approval of this very large house was neglected and ignored. So that's why I am for this to be repealed. Also, there's no perform... As I stated in 2018, there's no performance standards to these special permits. There's no limit to the footprint or the lot coverage. It's almost like, once it's nonconforming, who cares? It can be a hundred percent nonconforming. And we were promised at that time, the people who were proposing seventeen point one, trust us, we won't do McMansions. Now, I know a lot of people have used Raise and Replace in this room and have put forward a reasonable replacement, but there are starting to be McMansions in this town. I have been, you know, walking around for the elections and visiting a lot of you and door-knocking. I was shocked to see some places, it's a wall of houses. So that neighborhood that used to be able to see the water and all enjoy the water and feel that sea breeze now are all cut off by these big McMansions. It is... People think this is an isolated case. It's not. It's gonna be coming to all of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Marjorie Heck, Tupolee Road. I'm a potential abutter. I live on John's Pond. There are four properties now that are being considered for Raise and Replace on John's Pond. I've looked at those huge houses on the oceanfront that came... That blocked people's views and are multi... Well, they're just... They look like hotels, not houses. Our neighborhood has small houses, moderate homes, a lot of summer cottages. I would not like to see a behemoth, a huge house built and change the character of our neighborhood. Furthermore, the other point is, it's very difficult now in the summer to get out of the John's Pond area onto Route one fifty-one. If some of these things come in and they're Airbnb'd or have a lot of rooms, larger population, we're never gonna be able to get into town. It just... It's... And this is with no construction. So I think that people really got scared. There's a lot of scare propaganda out there. You won't be able to fix your house. I think all of those questions have been adequately answered. You will be able to fix your house, just as people could improve their property before 2018 with the existing regulation. And if it needs to be changed, there's always the October meeting. Change the existing regulation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two more speakers on this topic, maybe three.
Walt Lanko, Riverside Road in Mashpee. I'm opposed to this. I think our Planning Board and our Finance Committee have studied this, and I trust their opinion. It just feels like it's a taking. I have a property with an old house. That part of the property is a hundred years old. It's not gonna last much longer. If you freeze what you can do to a property, you're just taking the value away. You're just taking the value away. Thank you.
Two more speakers, if neither of them has a redundant point of view.
Russ Wilcox, Wheeler Road. I think I differentiate from a lot of the speakers here, and I'd like to speak to the younger generation, because we need to focus on a forward-moving Mashpee as opposed to one that is becoming exclusive to waterfront properties. Developers may turn to these pond areas, increasing the problems with the middle class. This shift will have direct financial consequences on middle-class families living around these ponds, of which I grew up on. The development of these luxury properties around these pond areas can increase property's taxes, can increase all of the negative effects that we've been seeing on our waters, on our economy, on the inability for my generation, the younger voters, to be able to live here on the Cape with the development of these McMansions. So I stand here speaking, not looking in the past, but looking in the forward, and I vote in favor of this motion to have sustainable development that respects the property owner's rights, but also puts in place sustainable regulations. And in doing so, I move the question to a vote.
I think I will allow one more brief comment, and then we'll get to the vote.
Scott Goldstein, Amos Landing Road, and a zoning board member. Some of the comments are not true, to my opinion. McMansion is a made-up word. There's no such thing as a McMansion. We are adamant, in the zoning board, we don't approve anything unless it's been approved by conservation, which means everything's being taken care of as far as the water leaving the property. We don't approve anything that goes... That's approved by Board of Health. They have to approve it, and we do not go beyond... We don't give any variances for over twenty percent lot coverage. It's different in different parts of town. And we don't allow things getting bigger than they're allowed to be in the town.
All right, we are ready.
One more comment, and it's another false representation. You can't renovate if you're in the wetland, if you're in a FEMA situation. FEMA only allows you to represent fifty percent of the value of the home, not the land, just the cottage or the house. If the town says it's worth four hundred thousand dollars, your budget is two hundred thousand dollars to renovate your home. Unfortunately, these days, that doesn't go far.
We are ready to vote on Article number forty-five. All those in favor, this does require two-thirds vote, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Well, they're pretty colorful cards. I kind of like this, so why don't we try it again? All those in favor of Article forty-five, please raise your voter card. All those opposed to Article 45, please raise your voter card. Bear with me a moment, I can feel the tension. All right, seeing as we need 180 votes, one way or the other, the yes vote is 210, the no vote is 149, the motion carries. So in other words, we need two, you would need two times that. All right, I stand corrected, with my thanks to Town Council, who's a better mathematician than I am. Since a two-thirds vote is required, neither reached that number, so the motion does not carry. Fourth period, 96 to 96. I'd be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone, and thank you very much for doing a lot before 10 o'clock. 10 o'clock.